Fable, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you to everybody for being here tonight. First order of business is to look at the regular council meeting and executive session minutes from June 3rd. Does anybody have any corrections? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve both of those sets of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Can't second. You have to abstain.
Abstain, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
I wasn't here. I didn't make it.
You weren't here. I'll second that.
Thanks, Mike. So, we have a motion by Rick and a second by Mike. For the minutes to be approved, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose, state no. And Becky and Robin are going to abstain. All right, those minutes are carried. Is there any changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Robin, second by Rick to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, state no. And the agenda is approved. Number six, guests in open forum. We'll go to letter A tonight. We're going to recognize two state championship teams. So in the past month or so, we've had the Becker High School Robotics Team and the Becker High School Boys Track Team win state titles. So like to invite the robotics coach up to the microphone if he wants to give us a quick one-minute spiel. You bet, right there. Let us know about your team's state championship. This is the fourth state championship, I believe, your team has won in the past 12 years.
Yeah, fortunately, we've had a good run for the last number of years. We missed in 2015 for qualifying for the state championship. And over the course of those 12 years, four state championships, a second place, a third place, and a few fourth places. So this year was really different for us. We graduated a lot of students last year in 2024. So we had a group of new students that came in and wanted to prove for themselves that they could continue on this tradition. What I do have, I do have Zach Hankelmeier here, and he's representing the team. He wants to give a couple words here, so.
Awesome. Thanks, Zach. Welcome.
Yep, and we started this year off, and I graduated a lot of seniors last year and weren't sure how it was going to go this year, but we pulled it together. And starting in January, we had kickoff where it revealed the game that we were going to compete in this year. And then we had six weeks of build season where we put in long hours and worked hard. And we got a robot put together and our first competition in Duluth in week one. We didn't quite compete as well as we were hoping. But, and we, but we did win the impact award, which is the most, at the regional, we won the impact award, which is the most prestigious award in first, which qualified us for Worlds. And then in the next three weeks, we worked hard to improve our robot so that at our week four regional in Maguano, we placed second overall and were captain of the second alliance, and we were finalists at the regional. But we lost to the number one alliance, so we got second place. And then at our home regional of Granite City, we were not a captain of an alliance, but we got picked by the first alliance. And we got like fourth place, I think, overall. And then we competed in Houston at Worlds, first championship. And we were picked, I think, first by, we're first pick of like the third alliance, so we competed well. And then we got, went to state, and it was a hard competition with the other finalists. But we eventually won the third finals match, which made us state champions this year. And it was a good season. We worked hard and we won state.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Zach. Congrats. That's wonderful. Coach Eric, we have a proclamation here. June 17th being proclaimed as championship Tuesday in the city of Becker, so.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you to our wonderful robotics team. And our boys track and field team. Coach Wiggy, Coach Schmidt said if he wasn't back yet, he's, he's on his way. But if you want to kind of step up there and just give us a little, I think this was just last week, so it's still pretty fresh, the end of last week, claiming the state title for boys track and field.
We've had an incredible season with great student athletes throughout the season as well, working, you know, in, in the 18 different events for boys, 18 different events for girls, competing at each level, competing in, in each of those in order to score. This year, for the first time in Becker history, both, I'm sorry, I take that back. There was in 97, both boys and girls did qualify for the state true team meet. And placed in that this year. We had our highest ever place for the boys team, as the boys team were state runner-ups for that competition. True team works out where every individual gets to score for that event or for each of the events that they are in. So you enter two, two athletes for each event, and they all score, so.
Hang on one second. Coach Schmidt is locked out, apparently. I guess Mr. Coach Wiggy really wanted to talk because he came in and locked the doors behind him.
Right.
That's a dirty move, but it's pretty effective when you can't get in the door, so.
Veteran move.
Veteran move, right there. All right, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's great. We're super proud of the, the team for their accomplishments throughout the season. Going into the state meet, we had already, or the, the team had already broken, I think, eight school records throughout the season. When it came to the state meet, we ended up with 12 season records, 12 school records broken throughout the season. So out of 36, we broke a third of those throughout the season. We had incredible support from community, including getting a new record board this season as well that is now hung up in the field house. It's, we have to do a little bit of updating with that, but it was awesome having Hurricane Industries and Angels Construction donating some supplies for that, as well as working to recognize our student athletes with that as well. It was, it's been a fun addition. We've had fantastic volunteer coaches as well as coaching staff. We're certainly going to miss our graduates as they venture off to new, new realms and continue to compete. But at this time, I guess I will pass it over to
Coach Schmidt, come on up.
To give a little state meet rundown.
Coach Wiggy locked you out so he could get the spotlight there.
I guess that's what you get for being late, right? I don't know, did you, what did?
We didn't talk about the state meet. Maybe you just want to recap.
Sure. I'll try to recap it as best we can. You know, even going back to the beginning of this school year, we, the state meets can have an interesting meet because you can win the Minnesota State High School League meet with a couple kids. The way it's set up, that's why we have our true team meet, which we also made it to and participated in this year, and ended up taking second place as a, as a team in the true team meet. But the Minnesota State High School League is set up so anyone who makes it to the state meet then competes obviously for their individual awards and, and events, but they also get thrown in as a team. So I've seen teams win it with just one or two people, and we had a few more than that to do it, even though a majority of our points came from our two seniors this year. So going into day one, Owen Angel participated. His, his final in the pole vault was our first day. So when we went into that meet, Owen had placed second the last two years in the pole vault. So it was, it was pretty fitting that he ended up winning the pole vault this year and became the pole vault champion for the state of Minnesota in class double A. We also, the rest of that day kind of went as planned because we were hoping to move as many as we could onto the finals for the next day, which we were able to accomplish. Carter Reckleberg moved on to the finals in the 100 and the 200, our four by 200 team moved on to the finals. We knew that Owen had a good shot at moving on in the hurdles, which he did in the 110s. He wasn't able to make it in the 300s. Parker Spindler was another runner of ours in the 3200 that made it to state but wasn't able to move, or that was a final, and he ended up placing, I think, 17th out of, out of the field. And then our four by four team also ran that day, and it was a long shot to see if we were going to make it. We just missed making finals by about a second, second and a half in that race as well. Did I miss anybody in that one? I think I got everybody for the prelims. Trying to do this all just from the memory, which was a blur for a little bit. When we went into our final day, we were sitting with 12 points. Owen had won the pole vault, which is, you win that event, you get 12 points as a team. So as we, as we competed that day, our four by eight team, which was the final event that day, we were, we had just missed, there were two heats of the four by eight, so there was a slow heat, a fast heat. We ended up just missing that fast heat, which was a goal of ours, by two hundredths of a second, and ended up in that slow heat, which we kind of spun around as a positive because we always tell our kids, if you go out and win that slow heat, there's a good chance that you're going to place in the meets. And by no means was that a slow heat. We ran our fastest time we've ever run. We broke our school record by three seconds in that event. Running an 807 was a fantastic feat for us. It was good enough in that heat to place a sixth overall, which was a really good start for us and a great accomplishment for those four runners that ran for us in that. That was Tanner Felton, Brand Hemmigan, and Evan Hubbard, and Parker Spindler. So it was a great, great showing for them. Ken also set the tone for the day for us. Yeah, Carter Reckleberg was next in the 100 and ended up placing second in the 100. And Carter had, his events came so fast. Carter's the two-time defending state champion in the long jump. And that's his, always been his, kind of his baby so-called, to speak for the track and field. It's his event. He's unbelievable in that event. So he wasn't able to get his run-throughs in because the state high school league makes you go up and stand for the pictures. So he had to go up and stand for the pictures. He, he did that. And then, of course, we had the four by 200 team that was also in it, and he is the anchor in that. He had to turn right around and go right to that race too. So Carter just didn't get a chance to really even warm up for the, for the long jump. Not that he wasn't warmed up, because he just finished those two races. He was able to anchor a four by two team to a second place championship. And that was along with Owen, Angel, Carter, and then two sophomores, Tarver, Sinjellus, and Isaiah Boyer. That was our, our lineup that we ran. That was only the fourth time we'd run that race as a team too. So to play second in the state with that team was pretty incredible, breaking again a school record that we had broken two or three previous times. Carter then proceeded to go over. At that point, our team has 40 points. And we're thinking, I, I told a few of the coaches that we were going to end with 64 points. I said Carter's going to win the long jump, he's going to win the 200. Well, the premonition came right because he did. He, he leaped 24 feet, one and three-quarter inches in the long jump to win the long jump, setting a new state record in class double A. And then he turned around, and we knew that it was going to come down to the 200. Alexandria, Monticello, and Becker have been competing for this all day. And at that point, before the 200, Alexandria was in the lead with 56 points. Monticello and Becker were tied with 52. So if Carter wins it, we get 12 and go to 64 points. But Alexandria also had a, had a athlete running in that that was ranked pretty high too. So we knew that he had to place fourth or lower in order for us to have a state championship. If he were to place third, we would have shared the title with Alexandria, but he ended up fifth in that race, and we ended up winning the state championship. So that's kind of how it all came to be. It was an exciting day, kind of amazing, you know, where that moment, and I, I've told a lot of people, you never want to cheer against a kid, but at the same time, we were just watching that Alexandria name come up there, just hoping that it was a little lower than, than what they were hoping for, and it worked out in, in our favor. So we had a great celebration coming back, really fun to have the escort coming into town and the people that joined us, put the, put the field house to celebrate. Becker's first-ever state championship in track and field, so.
Great.
There we go.
Congratulations very much.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark, for inviting us to come and just share that with you.
Have a little proclamation here. We proclaim this championship Tuesday in Becker, so.
There you go.
Awesome. Go. Congratulations. All right. Thank you to both teams and coaches for, for coming to be recognized. It's a great source of community pride, and that's a wonderful thing. And we certainly invite you to stick around for the rest of our ordinances and things like that. But we will not be offended if you leave because we know you're all busy people, so.
And if you don't want to, I can take a picture of you all with the mayor right now if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, let's get everybody up here, the council. Yeah, come on up.
I'll just want to gather up front real quick.
All right. Tony's got a shot. Come on over, folks.
Yeah, right in front here will work.
They're not going to see us anyway.
I know, right?
This is awesome. You guys are super short.
These guys are too tall.
That's awesome.
Stand up, Becky.
You know, I'm so short.
Attaboy, Wiggy. It's Tony.
I was like, thank you.
Congratulations. All right. All right. Congrats again. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here tonight that would like to address the city council? Of course not. We lock the doors. All right. We'll move on to number seven, committee reports then. Personnel?
Personnel, do you want me to grab that?
Sure.
Um, we met back on June 6th. We just kind of just did some quick updates on paid leave and just kind of was starting to just start with some budget assumptions, and that's really pretty much it. So it's simple now, but it'll get busy in a couple weeks.
Yeah, Shannon and Greg have their work cut out to figure out all the leave stuff, so.
Paid leave.
Let us know when you're done with that.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions for personnel? Wonderful. Public Works?
Sure. Okay, so we just met on June 11th. We had a couple things. We had some change order items. We ended up having to fix a hydrant replacement on Woodland Court when they were redoing those corners right there. I don't know if you guys saw that. They noticed that the one hydrant needed to be replaced. Learned some things about the railroad quiet zones in Becker. So you have to get an affirmation every five years for it, and so we were due. So basically, and I might be wrong on this, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but really what we need to do is just there's some fading on the crossing signs that need to get repainted. And that was about it, right?
The median's going to be raised.
Well, the median.
Yeah, we got to, we got to replace some signs. We got to redo the striping if it's faded and then.
Well, the median's kind of like, hasn't really been set. Oh, lordy, Chris, sorry.
Yes, so the three items that were addressed when the DOT person came in and inspected because somebody complained that they weren't being quiet in the quiet zone, so he came and checked it out. Yeah, so the markings at those crossings are faded, so they need to be repainted. That is part of the change order tonight for your consideration. There's one of the medians, the median at Liberty is not long enough. It's two feet short. And then the median at Hancock is two inches short in some spots, so. And then there's a couple of signs that aren't as big as they're supposed to be. They've been fine until now, but now they're not as big as they're supposed to be. So we'll, we'll do the signs in-house with staff, and then the medians will take up with our engineering and figure out costs and those kind of things, and that'll be something we address later. So we'll bring that information back to that inspector and let him know where we're at and see what his thoughts are from there, so.
All right. Sounds like the whistleblower is going to cost us some money.
Well, more importantly, we don't want to lose those quiet zones.
No.
True.
You guys stay up to date. Um, of course, I don't know if you guys remember last time, I kind of talked about the compost site discussion and how we've already blown through our score funding. Basically, it's just we're in the talks of what we can do because obviously we are not the only city that is having these issues. We have thought of things to change and just to be able to, because the problem is, is obviously we have a lot of illegal dumping going on that we need to address. There's been some cars that have been taken away this year, even from the conversation of maybe just going to a grass leaves and like an organic garden material situation and not being able to drop off the big, huge trees. Do you have anything on that? Yeah, that's going to just be an ongoing discussion. We talked about how our recycle day was great. It was very successful. And I don't know if you guys, any of you went to it, but there was kind of just, they surveyed the cars that were coming through to see if it would be an issue to do it during a weeknight versus a weekend. And it was kind of, there wasn't any major, like, I don't think people had an issue with it just as long as we stay open a little bit later, just because obviously this is a huge commuter town and get people in time to be here. So that we'll discuss obviously next year, come to it, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Public Works?
Fireboard? Fireboard, we met last night. We had our annual presentation of, presentation of the annual audit, and that was from the auditors, Schlatter, Winter. No, no deficiencies or major issues were presented there. It was, it was a clean, clean audit. We had, Greg had presented the, the paracost analysis, and that's for the fire relief. So is the analysis there, and that's potentially going to be, there's potentially going to be a switch in the administrator on that, so. But also just that, that level of where, where to be at. So we did have a recommendation, and that was 5,300? Okay, so, so 5,300 is, and so it's kind of, we got to make sure the cart gets before the horse, so they technically have to ask for it. And then, then there'll be something presented to us at our joint meeting in July when we meet as the two entities for the Fireboard. I think it's currently at 5,000 right now, but the analysis had showed that we could, that it could, the move to 5,300 would not. There would be extremely low risk in that, so. Final thing was, we had started a budget discussion, hoped to, we hoped to complete that last night. We need better data. I guess that's the, maybe the best way to put it. And so, and also we were up against the clock. Town Board had their meeting at 7:00 last night, so we had to cut off at 6:50. So we are going to have another meeting because, of course, we need to have a budget ready for us to all talk about in a month, so. And just with schedules and everything, we knew we were going to have that next Monday, is it 5:00 or 5:30? Five? 5:00 o'clock next Monday will be a special meeting to discuss further the budget for, for next year. And we also had some discussion, I don't know if we'll have activity on it next Monday, but we talked about a fund balance policy as well. So it's something that we have here at the city where we, you know, as, as the city, your main source of revenue comes in twice a year when the two times a year when everybody pays the property taxes. And so, of course, if you, you know, think of your own personal finances, if you didn't get paid until July, you know, if you got paid in December and then didn't get paid until July, you'd have to carry over quite a bit to cover that. And so we have a policy here that's been developed where we'll carry over a certain amount to cover that, but we, of course, don't want to be sitting on, you know, masses amounts of money either. So we have a policy that says that we only let it to grow to a certain percentage. And so talking about that at the Fireboard level as well, and that discussion, whether it comes out in the form of a formal policy or not, could have an impact on the budget discussion for this year, so. More to come on that. And that was Fireboard.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Fireboard? Okay, no parking wrecks. We're moving on to the Police City Hall project update. Mr. LaRude.
They're painting walls today. Yep, over here. Jacob can attest to that. Carpeting, the ceiling grid, mechanical will be starting to be hooked up. Still looking for before the 4th, it'll be done and occupied. And then we'll switch over to the outside parking lots. That millwork will be the first part. That'll be second or third week in July that will start, and we'll go from there.
All right. Any questions for Greg? All right. We'll move on then to number eight, board committee and consultant reports. I guess Mr. Sanders is going to come up here and paint a picture for us of what we're doing?
Could you kind of let us see what the walls are painted?
It won't, it won't be the same color.
I'll never live this one down. Anyway, thank you, Mayor Council. I can attest the color's nice. Looks good on the walls. I wouldn't recommend using it on your pants, though, so. So I'll turn the time over here to Mike, but at the last, I'll give a brief update, and then I'll kind of wrap up after Mike is done. At the last city council meeting, we had the Unified Development Ordinance brought for review and adoption. One of the things that statute requires, it's a little bit of a weird nuance in there, but they do it because if, in the case of a residential property getting, whether it's a portion or all of it zoned to some commercial, then you have to have a two-thirds majority adopt that ordinance. And in this case, we have a few properties that are currently are one that will still be able to be used for that purpose, but they're getting, their underlying zoning is changing to mixed use. So because of that, the ordinance adoption was tabled to this evening. So Mike gave a little bit of a rundown last time. He'll kind of do the same here, but I, we actually have the slides up on screen this time, so he'll run through those and answer any questions, and then I'll wrap up at the end.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Jacob.
Thanks, Jacob. Mike Lamb with the MSA Consulting team, and good to see everybody tonight. I'm going to stay on the championship theme. I think this is your zoning and subdivision championship night, and I think you've got a chance to go to be number one here. I'm, I'm, I'm very confident of that. And just a detail, this photo of T-Town was in our original interview, so we've used that as the slide, slide holder since 2023, so a little side note there. Let's talk a little bit about goals and objectives. Mainly, the idea was trying to keep, and by state mandate, having our zoning, your zoning code aligned with the comprehensive plan and the policies and the directions of the comprehensive plan. That was one of the main things we're focused on with the update. Obviously, we're trying to simplify things. We reduced quite a number of pages out of the original code itself, chapter 11, which is going to go away. Try to get to more common and plain English language in there, communicating with numbers, graphics, and words, trying to make standards a little more flexible, and then obviously update state, state code legislation and also free speech updates from the Supreme Court. I won't dwell on this, and so this is a misnomer. It's, I'm calling this chapter 11 UDO, but it's not. It's going to be just the UDO. But what we did is we divided the subdivision and the zoning codes into five articles, which will make up the, were four articles, which will make up the Unified Development Ordinance. Article one zoning, two is signs, three is subdivision regs, four is definitions. We pulled definitions from all the code sections and put them in one central location. And then staff updated the, the map as well to, to result in a Unified Development Ordinance. I won't go into detail on this, but you can see August, May and August, we kind of really got into this in 2023. Had a different council then, as we, than we do tonight. But nonetheless, our Plan Commission, which was our advisory group, really carried the day and spent a lot of time with this, so we appreciate their focus on that. Public open houses throughout the, throughout the planning period, as well as recent ones in March of this year. You can kind of see here just a quick comparison between existing districts on the left and proposed districts on the right. We reorganized a lot of the residential districts, as Jacob was making a reference to. Added some commercial districts that are more mixed use in nature. And in the case of T-Town, which was a technically a And in, in the case of T-Town, which was a technically a zoning district, we've made that a very compact mixed use town center district. Reduce the number of industrial districts from three to two. Uh, we've migrated public and quasi-public uses into an institutional district. And then while in, there are some others there, including, uh, planning unit development that basically are, are staying as they are for the most part. Uh, just an example, the urban standards, we call this a toothpaste spread. There's a table that has most of the quantifiable data. That's required for lot development, dimensional standards, those kinds of things, setbacks, yards, um. Uh, dot, dot, dot. And then we also illustrated each one of those districts as well, so you can easily see, uh, what the standards are replying to. Or what they're talking about. Uh, we also combined and consolidated all the uses. That are allowed in all the districts into one table. So if you need to find out what is allowed, you go to this one table. Boom, there it is. And that's, uh, coded by, uh, permitted accessory, conditional use, interim use. And then, um, blank is not permitted in that particular district. There's, there's five pages of that. Um, uh, five pages of that table. And that was just an example of, of one of the pages. We illustrated the signs a little more clearly, so people can understand exactly where they apply on particular buildings or sites. Uh, in, in the case of, uh, s- dimensional standards, we've, uh. We did some analysis to try and understand lot size relative to sign size and, uh, it, it, there's a lot of similarities to what your old code was. But, uh, kind of, uh, updated that with graphics as well. Subdivision regs, use some, uh, graphic language there to help people understand layout, dimensions, uh. Depth and length of subdivisions and lots and blocks as well. Um, and again, I won't get into this, but obviously, um, definitions, I don't know, there's probably, I don't even remember, twenty pages? Twenty-one pages of definitions that if they do change and they do change, we had to add some definitions from, from, uh. State statutes into the code. Uh, things change, you know, we've got, uh, the whole cannabis, uh, side of the world. We've added those definitions in here, so it'll be easy to kind of update this as you go forward in, in the future and Article Four. And then the existing versus proposed zoning map, we've kind of sta- worked with staff on getting a little more, um. Um, saturated palette here, if you will, a little easier on the eyes, so, um, I think with that, uh, in general. We looked at, uh, a, a variety of different, uh, updates throughout, uh, the code and the subdivision. Including the districts, language, parkland dedication, some subdivision arrangement standards. On the residential side, you'll see, um, you guys have talked about this in the past about residential, residential driveway standards and where. Parking can go and size of parking. I think you guys ended up on eight foot trailers in the side yard.
Utility in the front.
Yeah, yeah, utility in front, yeah, only. So anyway, there's, you know, some things that were addressed there for residents. Uh, fin- updated fencing regulations and on the business side, more flexible regulations for McShus District, the T-Town signs. And then some updated performance standards as well. Um, I think we, I don't know if we need to go through this. We're not in June third anymore, we're June seventeenth. Uh, and I think with that, I'll turn it, unless there's any questions by anyone, I'll turn it back over to Jacob.
May I have any questions for Mike? All right, thanks for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike. Just want to say MSA and Mike did a really good job of taking us through this and kind of sticking in there a little bit longer than. We anticipated, but I think the time was well spent to try and get it right. Um, no zoning ordinance is perfect. If there was, then we'd all be out of a job any, no. Uh, we, there's no zoning ordinance, it's perfect. Everybody, community has some different things and they, you know, as Mike mentioned, statutes change and things change. However, um, there's been a lot of time and effort put into this by Planning Commission, lots of long meetings and lots of hours over the past two years. Council, also some workshops that took a while, a lot of staff from Austin to Karn and many others and just collaboration across the board. So this was a really big group effort to get this done. Um, and I think it'll pay dividends for the city. I really do. I think it's made some things more simple. Hopefully it's clarified some things for some people and as the, as we push some things out, should this get adopted tonight. Um, we'll communicate a lot of those things. I think it'll make it a little easier for the public to kind of know what's going on in their own zoning code. Uh, so with that, uh, we are seeking. Uh, I, I will say one thing too, and I'll, I'll clarify this in the, the motion. There are a couple of really minor changes. They don't affect the intent or anything or the content, really, they're just aligning the table of uses with the definitions. In the commercial cannibal section, we need to change, it says conditional use, it's actually an interim use in the new table. And then just some numbering in the table of uses for a section, so don't affect the intent or anything, but we just need to make those change. So we're seeking for a motion, a second approving ordinance, uh, two ninety-five second series. And that would be to repeal current chapters eleven and twelve and the current zoning map. And it would replace it with the Unified Development Ordinance and the new official zoning map. And then ordinance two ninety-five, and then I would say with those changes that we mentioned, and then ordinance two ninety-five second series summary for publishing purposes. And with that, I'll answer any questions as well.
All right, thank you, Jacob. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I will say that at our Planning Commission meetings, we came up with a lot of scenarios. That they had to look into is one of the reasons it took so long to get this done. It wasn't, we didn't just sit there like bumps on the log.
Yeah, it's been, you've been working on it a long time. All right, hearing no other questions, then I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two ninety-five second series. And repeal chapter eleven and twelve of the city Becker City Code. And the current official zoning ordinance map and adopt the UDO and new official zoning map with the changes that Jacob mentioned.
And I'll make that motion with a whole second.
Okay, we have a motion by Rick. We have a second by Mike. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. That motion carries. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt ordinance two ninety-five second series summary for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Rick, second by Mike to publish the ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your support on this. I really appreciate it and the time.
And take a two week vacation now, or?
Well, I painted myself, so I gotta get that off.
Well, there you go.
Mr. Mayor, may I, just quickly, on behalf of MSA, we appreciate you taking confidence in us and letting us work with you over these couple of years. To update this. Um, we're, uh, we're finishing up our part of the contract, but we're not far away. Jacob also know how to get ahold of us if anything comes up, but, uh, congratulations on the zoning championship tonight, so.
All right.
All right, thanks, Mike. All right, moving on to the change orders for the twenty twenty-five Street Improvements Project. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I kind of want to break the trend because I don't want to be a change order champion.
You already are.
In front of you tonight, uh, the, the, the main genesis for this change order is, uh, my error, uh, to start with. I did not include the golf course paving, uh, in the twenty twenty-five Street Improvement Project, so, uh, I neglected to put that in the, uh, original documents for SEH. And subsequently, we didn't put it on there. It is budgeted in our CIP, um, and I just failed to do that. So that brings us here to the change order. Uh, with that, there was a couple of surprises, um, as, as was mentioned, the, the quiet zone. The striping that we need to do, um, just to elaborate a little bit more on the quiet zone. Um, the signage, as Chris mentioned, will be done by staff, um, uh, this year. So we're trying to put our best foot forward with the Federals, um, to, to look, show them that we're, we're going to get the striping done, we're going to get the sign packages done. And asking if we can do some engineering and incorporate the curb work that would need to be done in next year's street improvement project. If they say no to that, uh, we'll bring it back and we'll work with either local contractors or po- potentially our contractors on the current street projects. To try and get some of that pricing in there, but, um, there's a bend towards, they'll give us a, a little leeway if, as they see that we're putting our best foot forward. To get some of this stuff done. So we'll keep, uh, Public Works forward through Public Works and keep Council up to speed, should we need to do anything yet this year, so. Uh, but with that, uh, we did reach out to, uh, Sir Lines a lot. Is our, uh, they're the little bidder on our street projects.
How cool, too.
It's, it's a name we remember, right?
That is true.
So baby needs stripes, so, uh, um, anyhow.
I see we got dad jokes left over from five years ago. Oh, man.
Um, but anyhow, with that, uh, we're, we're looking to, uh, capture them while they're here. So, uh, part of the change order is for them to do the quiet zone striping work. Uh, that one is a price not to exceed, I actually put it, uh, I included the contractor's markup, uh, which would be as it's, uh, proposed to us. It's seventeen thousand, eight forty-eight and eleven cents. Um, we are working with them that we're hoping the timing is such that when they're in town. Doing the street work, they can do it at the same time. Uh, we left the mo- mobilization in this bid, uh, just in case something didn't work out. So I didn't want to come back and have to ask for that there, but hopefully we'll see that, that two, I think it's two thousand or twenty-one hundred dollars that we could remove from that. Um, the other issue is on Woodland Court, as Becky mentioned. Uh, when staff was out there, uh, exercising the hydrants to, uh, just check gate valves, make sure everything's working. Uh, they couldn't get the hydrant, one of the hydrants to seat out there, to shut it down. Uh, with the road torn up, it's the best time to try and replace that hydrant lead. So, uh, we, we look to our contractor to, to give that, the, the pricing of the materials is, is decent. Uh, the work, they got us over a barrel a little bit. I think it's decent pricing. I don't think it's like a screamer deal, but it's, it's good pricing. Uh, along with that, what we would look to do is place some isolation valves. Neither of the hydrants on Woodland Court right now have isolation valves. So if staff needs to do any work, we've got to shut the whole main off and shut the development off from water. So since we're there, we would like to, um, make it more uniform with what we do in the city, where we can isolate any of the hydrants and work on the hydrants. While keeping everybody else with water. So that's what that number come to be. It's twenty thousand, uh, twenty thousand, uh, nine sixty. Uh, it actually runs up a little bit more than that with the five percent, uh, and that would look to come out of the wa- the water, uh, CIP. Uh, as for the paving on the golf course, we broke that down into two sections as well. Uh, the wellhouse, uh, that resides on the golf course. Um, is the function of the water department, so we wouldn't have that road going out to the wellhouse if it wasn't for the wellhouse being there. So we broke the paving down in two sections. One is from basically the clubhouse or the, uh, the garbage structure, uh, out to the maintenance shop. The maintenance shop was paved in twenty eighteen, the, the parking lot, so that's in, in really good shape. Um, so we would pull that out of the golf CIP and then from the maintenance shop to the, the, uh, wellhouse. We would look to pull that out of the water fund. Uh, we were looking to add that into our CIP for next year, um, because I made the error. Um, but in talking with Greg too, we looked at it and said, well, it makes more sense to look at our quantity pricing right now and do that work. So we're not bringing heavy equipment over a brand new stretcher road and have to redo that next year. Um, the fund balances are adequate there to, to be able to cover this. So when you wrap the whole thing up, we put it all in one, but broke them down because we have different funding sources. Uh, the change order total comes to, uh, ninety-one thousand, four forty-two fifty-five. So tried to give you a good synopsis of where we're at, um, but I can stand for any questions should you have them as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Phil? All right, then we entertain a motion for change order number one.
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one for the twenty twenty-five Street Improvement Project in the amount to not exceed ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-two. Dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Becky, a second by Robyn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. That motion is carried.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. And we're on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Colburner, City Council members, items for approval on tonight's consent agenda include approving the hire and termination report. Declaring, uh, property surplus and ordering its disposal for the police department and as well for the city hall. Approve the twenty twenty-five liquor license renewals and approve partial pay request number eleven in the amount of two hundred, seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven. Dollars and sixty-seven cents to Apex Construction Group for the Police Department City Hall renovation project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Greg? If not, we would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Rick. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. That motion is carried. Thank you. Next up is payment of the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second.
All right, Robyn and Rick want to pay the bills. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. The bills are paid. Just wanted to give a quick shout out to the Freedom Days Committee. Uh, if people weren't aware, the, the city was no longer in charge of Freedom Days. It's now a nonprofit organization structure with volunteers, so a shout out to Mary Langley. She did a great job coordinating things. Spent countless hours, uh, said a lot of prayers about the weather. It was mostly, I think, answered, so good job to her on that. Um, big shout out to the Becker Lions. The fireworks were awesome. Uh, they, they of course played a key role again and city staff. Uh, we weren't in charge, but I saw a lot of city staff around. I'm sure everybody did and, uh, they did a fantastic job. Thank you to all law enforcement. I know Saturday, Friday night and the Saturday was kind of a weird time. Um, but we had a, a very large, uh, law enforcement presence, which was really appreciated. I know a lot of those folks worked some extra time. So, great job, everybody. I think it was a pretty awesome Freedom Days. It was fun to be downtown again. Anybody have any comments?
It's good turnout for the parade.
Yeah.
Good.
Fantastic. Then I guess we would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Rick. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, state no. Meeting's adjourned at five forty-six. We do have, uh, executive session coming up. Does anybody want to break or do we want to just roll?
Let's roll.
All right. It's five forty-seven. We'll call the executive session to order. We're going to talk about compost, apparently. Thank you, Tony.
It's a discussion.
Tony, you had a haircut. You're still cool to us. Still cool to us. You're like a teacher's pet.
On my phone. I tried to read this on the phone. Yeah, not so good.
Oh, this is what you emailed us.
Couldn't read it on the phone.
Couldn't read it.
Well, what I do is I use my computer. It's got a thirty-two inch screen. It's pretty easy to see.
My computers were busy today.
All right, we won't try to take too much time. Just wanted to kind of bring this up. We talked about a little bit of Public Works Committee. Um, so as you know, we have a yard waste site. We, uh, when I started here, it was a joint agreement. Between the cities of Elk River, Big Lake, Zimmerman and us and the county. Uh, the city, each year will apply for score funding from the county that helps fund the yard waste facility. Um, the first thing I gave you was a letter from the county, so this is just an update, so you guys are aware. Uh, Vonco has started up their source separated organics program again, so per our score agreement, and we accept that money. Then all of our material from our yard waste sites goes to that source separated organics, um, organization, whoever's doing that.
They just take over the old full circle facility or?
I don't even know. It's on their site there, so I don't, I assume so.
Uh, north side.
They had started it like, Vonco had started back up again, uh, three, four years ago for a short time. And then they've, they've been at some of our meetings talking about wanting to get it going again and we need the material, we need the carbon, so we can do this. And, and it's always kind of, yeah, that's, that's great. Who's paying for it, right? So, um. So part of that is, this is just a letter from the county and just reminding us that as part of that agreement, that material has to go to Vonco now. So just wanted you guys to be aware of that. Um.
Chris, sorry, does that mean nobody can take anything from the compost site?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So we did ask, like, you know, can we just keep some, no, I mean, that, that's kind. Essentially, yes. Yep. So we did ask like, you know, can we just keep some? No, I mean, that, that's kind of a, you know, you grind it. We can kind of do what we want to do. So we got a little bit, cause I know people do like to come and get some, you know, for potting plants and, you know, holes in the yards, those kinds of small things. Um, so we, we will make sure we have some of that available yet, but yes, we will honor our agreement to the best of our ability. Uh, we, we mentioned the county. I mean, they didn't say absolutely not, but the language states we're supposed to send it all to Vonco. So.
So when we grind that up into black dirt, that, all that is supposed to go to full s- or whatever they are now.
Yep. Yep. So, yep. Um, so that was an update on that. Then yesterday we had a meeting, um, as a group again. So one of the things over time that we've seen, and I've, I've got some, I just have some numbers on my computer. The score funding has been forty thousand dollars since twenty twenty, and last year they bumped it up to fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, which seems like a lot of money, but the grinding costs have, uh, grown exponentially. So cost per square yard has gone up from two to three dollars a square yard to now it's more like eight or nine. Um, so the increases, part of that is there's just not many people that do it. Um, it's very rough on equipment and, um, you gotta have, if you do it, you gotta have a s- some way to get rid of it and make money. Otherwise it doesn't make any sense. So we've seen some that have kind of gone away, some that don't want to do it just because grinding our material can be interesting for them and hard on their equipment. And then we've also, what we battle with, especially, you know, like last year with a couple of pretty significant storms in the summer. Then in the winter time, we had the heavy snow that took out a lot of trees just in our town. Uh, this is open to anybody in Sherburne County. So if you live in the county, you can get a card from one of those four sites and bring things in. And what we've seen over time is people are taking full advantage of access to the site. So, uh, apparently everybody except me has a dump trailer now cause they are in and out of that place nonstop, um, which, you know, the easier the equipment is, the easier it is for people to bring things in that are, uh, not allowed beyond what that site's used for. Um, I think that's kind of the full circle that we're seeing right now as all four entities is, uh, the county sees these sites as a way to, uh, you know, they, they have a source separated, uh, policy in the county. They want to try to keep as much organic material out of landfills as they can. These sites were one opportunity for that. These sites were never intended to be commercial dumping sites, uh, and that is kind of our biggest battle. So, um, a lot of people, you know, even if we see people that come in and, you know, dump trailer, big truck, yeah, it's my card for my residence. Yeah, but you were here nine times last week. So that's probably not all coming from your house. So, um, the, as our discussions have gone around, the county's kind of changed their tune a little bit. Uh, in the past, it was kind of a, you guys take care of sites, you do it, take care of it, monitor it, keep people out there that aren't supposed to be there. We're kind of the bank. We provide money. Um, and, and that's what we want to do. As we've, these problems have kind of grown and as we see more material coming in, it's, we need to do something different. Like that's not going to work. And we've always been very careful to stay together as the four, because if you change, if one person does something different, then it's going to be a repercussion to the other three. So if we say we're not taking something, the other three are going to get hammered. So, um, so we're always very cautious as a group to try to stay together. Um, with that being said, the county is very interested in continuing this program. They want access for people. Um, they have very clearly said that, although we did see a little increase here, that their score funding for the county is, what it is, is what it is, kind of. There's, there's not more money going into that. So we're not saying you're going to get less, but we're not saying you're going to get more either. So that's a bit of a struggle, like I said, with volumes going up and grinding costs going up. We, in the past have been, you know, maybe spending half of our score funds and that would cover not only the grinding, but disposal of that. It would cover our bills related to electricity, cameras, the system that operates the gates, all those things. Now, last, this year we did a grinding in February and it was fifty-eight thousand dollars. Our score funding is fifty-five thousand. So in one grinding, we used up all of our score funds plus a little extra. And now our question to the county is, well, our pile is almost as big as it was last year already. And now what, what are we going to do about that? So the rea- kind of that part of this discussion is, and we've kind of pushed back on the county a little bit. Um, if you can't give more funding, what, what is kind of your solution, what you think we should do? There, the meeting we had on Monday was a focus was on, well, we need to get rid of commercial haulers. We need to stop commercial haulers. Yes, I agree. How? Um, you can, so the first discussion was limit hours. Whatever your hours are, if a person wants to use it, they'll figure the hours out and they'll use it. So to me, that's not, that's not a solution. We talked about attendance and those kinds of things. So it's, it was a topic that was brought up, you know, you have to either make an appointment, which again, I have some concerns because now the people that aren't using it incorrectly are going to have less access because people, other people are using it incorrectly. So that, and it seems like an awful waste of all that equipment that we installed when, now if we're going to make appointments. So, um, we talked about having an attendant, but obviously if the score funding is such that doesn't cover much more than the grinding, that additional cost would have to be absorbed by the cities themselves. So I don't know what the appetite is there, but you know, our material is, that comes in, I would say, uh, you at, at a very high end fifty-fifty city versus other, I'd say it's probably more other than city, but it's, it's hard to quantify that exactly. So you, you know, the internal struggle is a little bit of, well, if our score funding isn't covering most of those costs anymore, then I struggle with our taxpayers subsidizing either a commercial business that's using it in a way they're not supposed to, or just people outside of our city bringing things in. You know, if you have acreage outside and you want to take down twelve trees because you got them, well, that's nice, but now that's an expense that's greater than most of what our residents would do. Um, so we haven't really decided exactly what, what was proposed. Our last meeting is one step we'd like to do is we'd like to do a hard reset of all the cards. So something that we've seen is there are people that have cards that are no longer residents, but they were residents at one time. They just keep the card. Um, we've had other ones where people take other people's cards and then they just keep them. Um, so, uh, one proposal is we get it out. Uh, the cities would share it. The county would share the information, letting all people that have cards at the site know that January first of twenty twenty-six, we're going to kill all the cards. If you have your card and you're still a resident, you can come in, show that you have residency, so water bill, something that proves you're a resident, and we'll just reactivate your card. That will get rid of some of the people, people that can't prove that they're, you know, a resident anymore will kind of clear some of that up. We'd also talked about potentially doing that on a regular basis, like maybe annually or every five years. The group wasn't as excited about that. And then we had also talked about, you know, what's it worth to an individual? So right now it's free essentially. You know, you lose a card, you gotta pay, I think we're up to ten dollars now for a second card, seven, ten, ten. Um, so the thought was, and it wa- it was something I proposed to the group was, well, I mean, if we're worried about, you know, we're short on funds and we want to try to limit this sum, it would make sense then that you do this annually. People have to come back in. You gotta get your card re-engaged and you pay ten dollars, twenty dollars, five dollars, you know, something that we could agree on as a group that would make sense. And if you want access to that and a good place to get rid of those materials, I, I'd pay it. I mean, it's not a lot of money and it's convenient to use. So, um, the group as a whole was a little cooler on that concept of it. They liked the hard reset once, but not so sure about doing it all the time. So.
Why not?
Why? Yeah.
It, it makes sense. If you're coming up, uh, fifty thousand dollars shorter every year, you gotta have somewhere to pooping that money. I'm not interested in spending our taxpayers' money for something like that where non-city residents are using it.
I think some concerns was administrative time to do the process each year, because it's still going to fall back on each city to do it. It's not the county. I did propose to the county that we could move that function to planning and zoning in the county and they could do it.
Yes.
I didn't get much response to that one, but, um, cause I thought that would save us a lot of time. Um, so that's kind of where we're at with that part of it. Yeah. So I guess tonight I'm kind of, I, I'm assuming as a council, and I'm, I guess I'm asking you guys, I mean, we want to continue to have a yard waste site as a city. It makes sense for our residents, that kind of thing. Um, we are pushing back to the county to help us try to figure out what the best solution is for just this growth in people using the site, the stuff they bring. Um, I guess I didn't touch on the illegal dumping. Some of this is probably, you know, we probably hasn't, haven't enforced this as strongly as we could have over time. Um, in the past, I looked back actually and found at one point, we actually had to apply for the score funding, like there was a little application you filled out. We haven't had to do that for a while. So I don't know if the county kind of just decided it wasn't important anymore. Um, and there was, one of them, you had to lay out every line item. One line item was a certain amount of money for disposal of illegal debris. So that was kind of accounted for in the past, but now we're again, we don't have money for that now. So, yeah, any of the dirt, rocks, stumps, root balls, uh, garbage bags, lumber, bricks, uh, all that kind of fun stuff. The, when they come to grind, the grinders will just push it off to the side and then we have to get rid of it some way, shape or form. Usually means taking it out to Vonco. So again, in the past, when we weren't expending all of our score funds, it wasn't a big deal. You could use some of that money to take that. But now again, we're to that point where we're not quite getting enough to cover all that. So, um, I guess it, I wanted to give you guys an update. I didn't expect you'd say we don't want it. Um, I guess what we're going to keep pushing with the county is kind of working on eliminating commercial haulers. I'm still not exactly sure how we're going to do that.
Can you, can you limit the number of times a card works per week?
It's a good question. I know we can set timers for when the cards will work. Uh, I don't know. I'll look.
Even if it doesn't limit to say like it's going to deny you, if it at least alert you. So you come in on Monday and it says, you know, Mark was here seventeen times this weekend, you know, at, at least we would know after the fact.
Well, and that, that is one thing, that's one thing too, we kind of brought up to the county a little bit is it, it all sounds good when we talk about doing it, like even us trying to enforce it more, because it makes sense. If you don't enforce it, people don't care. The problem is it takes a lot of time, like trying to look at the cameras. And then I know even our PD's been very helpful this year with kind of our next step. Cause, uh, last year I had kind of added to code. So I wanted to make sure our code stated what we do accept, what we don't accept, and what the process is if you dump something that's not accepted. Um, and P has been very helpful, but they've even acknowledged like, okay, this is a lot. Like we didn't think it was going to be this many. So, um, so we're working, working through that process. And that was kind of the thing we said to the county too, like, okay, I, you know, we sit in a meeting and we say we have to stop this, but you have to actually do it. And it's really difficult without, I mean, I still come back to without an attendant there checking vehicles, because even we have a camera that can see cars coming and going, but a lot of these trailers now have covers. So they put the tarp over and they go, and I can't see what's in your trailer. I can see it's this pile probably here. So then it gets a little like, well, it wasn't my stuff. How do you know it's my stuff? You know, so it gets to be kind of that issue. Um, so I will.
Chris, can you define what a root ball is for me?
A root ball would be anything, so anything that's like not a stump of a tree, but it still contains the roots of a bush or a tree that you've ripped out of the ground. And the reason we can't accept them, because I, I kind of had this discussion with Cory a little bit. Like it's weird that we can't, like these grinders can grind, you know, thirty-five inch logs, not the ones we get here, but some of the big ones can. But it's the, what they're concerned is that there's the, you know, if these root balls grow and they absorb a rock as they grow and this rock is in there now that goes through the chippers and now it's a problem for their chipper blade. So.
Yeah. So it's, but it's not like from flower pots.
No, no. Flower pots can, yeah, those kinds of roots are fine. They can run that right through the grinder. It's more from brush, trees, those kinds of things. Yep.
Would there be a market to charge the commercial people?
So we used to charge commercial people. It was about a thousand bucks, I think, a sticker annually, and you're supposed to do each vehicle. They figure out ways around that too, unfortunately, but, um, that was proposed. Elk River talked about that. Elk River actually talked about, could they charge for it? So we, we kind of all have a little bit different ways where we're at, right? Elk River just gets hammered from the metro. So they struggle with either people that are in the county that go that way to do work, and then they bring the material back, which they're not supposed to do, but they do. And so one of their things were, and they're, one of the things we run into, I guess it's kind of where I'm getting a feel too, the, uh, the mayor, when we first talked about eliminating commercial haulers, the mayor at the time in Elk River, I think he still is mayor. He said that, okay, if you guys want to eliminate commercial haulers, you can do that, but you have to allow a commercial entity that does work for one of my residents to be able to use that site. So they have to take the card from the homeowner, and if it's grass clippings or brush they trimmed or a tree they took down, they still have to be able to use that, because if I have an eighty-five year old resident that can't do that work, they need to be able to get rid of that. So he was very adamant about, we can eliminate commercial haulers as just using the site for random, but you have to keep it open for them to use it, which is very difficult to.
It's good on paper, but how do you actually track that?
We voiced that, but we kind of had to go along with that and that sentiment at the time. So, um, and that's where it gets difficult. Cause again, then you're kind of, you know, you gotta kind of interrogate, like what are you doing here? What do you got?
Being paid by that eighty-five year old to do the work. So if there's a charge involved, it would be passed on. I, I don't know. I mean.
It, it was something we talked about. It'd be a way to fund back and it just, in the past it was difficult, because then it's, you know, you gotta get the stickers, people gotta buy them. I mean, we could do the process, but again, it's another administrative task on our end if we want to do it that way. And I'm not sure it's still, because then we get into now if we open it back up fully and we have volumes that are greater than our site capacity, now we have a different issue. And especially if the score funds stay flat and we open it up and all of a sudden our pile, we're full and it's June. Okay, we're closing the site. So now the residents can't use it because we can't do it. Or we, the city would have to take on potentially a second grinding at fifty-five thousand dollars a year, which, I mean, if that's where you guys want to go, we could do that too, I guess, but.
I'd be more in favor of having an annual fee for you. I would pay it. I go there.
I don't use it all that much, but I would pay it because what else am I going to do with it?
Yeah.
Well, it seemed like a good, a good, easy first step.
Do the other one, other entities have a, a fee?
It's all the same. So we all follow the same thing. So first card is free, replacement cards are ten dollars.
He was saying that they don't want to do a, uh, every year fee, but I think we really need to.
Yeah, I think someone were concerned just about the administrative side of it. You know, if you're a city of Elk River and you kill all the cards and you have to redo it, you're talking a fair number of people that got to come back through the door and do that. Now, you probably call in and have it done and pay over the phone kind of thing, but.
Online process.
Do it online possibly.
But I'm going to guess that a lot of that's going to fall back to us to do. The county is helpful to a point.
I understand that, but if we could set it up where they could do it online.
Okay.
Pay with your water bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Brilliant minds think alike.
Twenty-five bucks a year or nothing. I'd pay more than that. And I, like I said, I don't use it that much, but I don't want to.
Well, I mean, when you go around and see things, you know, Maple Grove has a big site, but it's more of a privately run, you know, those cities can go there, but they, everybody pays a fee. You know, you pay a fee to use it. You pay a fee if you're dumping additional materials, so size of loads. There's people there monitoring it. You know, I lived in Sock Rapids. I think it was open Tuesday and Thursday for like two hours and Saturday for four. So, you know, to me that would be, you know, if you're really going to go one direction, you could do that. But then you're kind of losing the convenience of what we currently have, which I think is, we would hear about it. You would hear about it. I don't think that's where we want to go. So.
It's just too bad that a few ruin it for the many.
Always the case.
Yep.
Is there, um, from a city standpoint, is there enough use to purchase a grinder that we would use it in other areas of the city where we could justify purchasing it and use it, doing that ourselves?
They're really expensive. I mean, you're well over a million dollars for a grinder.
That'd be like buying a.
For a bigger one. Yep. So the, the, uh, they had a grinder with the, when it was a joint powers, they had a grinder, like a tub grinder originally, long before my time.
Was that the one that we had to dissolve? Cause.
No, that was a skid steer. Yeah, Zimmerman still had the skid steer. Didn't ran, didn't run, hadn't run for years, was sitting in the corner of a shed. But, um, so I had brought that up four years ago, because I'm like, well, if the problem is we can't get grinders for a reasonable cost, can't we purchase one with, or use score funding or somehow? And then that was not, no, it's too expensive. Uh, what they got into was, you know, it, it went from one site to the next. Who's going to transport it? Who's taking that cost on? Then it was, well, it got here and it's broke. You guys broke it, fix it. Well, no, it worked fine when we, you know, so there was that whole circle. So the group was very, was not really in favor of, of doing that. We did talk about it, um, but then the cost of the grinders alone is kind of a non-starter. That's a lot of money.
You say well over a million or is it a million?
Uh, I think the one that, uh, uh, that was just here was one point two or something. Yeah, you had just bought it. So.
Who hauls the stuff to Vonco?
So in the past, the, kind of the debris that's not supposed to be there, we would do it just with city trucks.
I meant the new, the organics now that we're grinding.
So if Vonco does it, they will haul it. We still have to pay them to haul it, but that's what the score funds are for per the county.
So the county's given a score. So the county's given us score funding, but saying we have to transport all of our organics out there. How much are we spending on that any year, do you know?
Uh, well, in the past, we haven't, cause when they do the grinding, they dispose of it, so we haven't had to deal with that yet. So that's kind of the next piece of the puzzle here. Um, it does say in the agreement, so that letter, it does talk about, uh, let's see. Uh, position of receiving the grant provided for in this agreement, grantee shall make all carbon material resulting from grantee's composting operations available. For any source separate organics recycling program located within the county. The county will provide grantee notice and then, uh, so it's available, grantee may not just, okay, yeah. If grantee's transportation disposal costs increase as a result of transporting the carbon material to a designated source. Separate organic composting program, the county will increase the grant provided for in this agreement in an amount equal to grantee's increased. Transportation disposal costs. So it says that in there, but yet it sounded like in our meeting, like their, their number is topped out. So I guess I'd have to explore that a little more.
They're in a huge budget issue down there, cause of all the stuff that's come down from the state in the last couple of years, a lot of it is hitting their budget directly, so.
That was mentioned. Yeah, yeah, so. So we will, the plan is to meet again in August, so I guess I feel like we've got a little bit of idea. We want to keep it, there's some things we can suggest on our end that'll make it better. Um, uh, I don't know if, if at some point they want to get councils or mayors together, would you guys have any interest in? Meeting if there's, and in the past, they talked about it, so.
Well, we could send a representative, I wouldn't problem with that.
And if, if that's something that they want to do in addition, then I will get that set up, but.
But if we did, uh, do an annual fee, then everybody would do that, so anybody that's got a card.
The sites would stay the same. That's always been our goal and everybody's usually been pretty receptive to that, so. Cause we know if one does something differently, then it's gonna drastically affect the other three, so.
Well, if we charged the fee, but then we would keep the fee, so the city of Becker charged the fee, city Becker keeps the fee. I mean, I'm not gonna, for twenty-five bucks a year, I'm not gonna run my stuff down to Big Lake all the time. I'm, I'm gonna pay the twenty-five dollars and do it here. I think most. People would too, so is that something we could just? I, I don't think that's really gonna affect their stuff too much, other than maybe the commercial people. So is that something we consider doing, even if they don't?
You don't have key separation though.
Yeah, your key will work in Big Lake or Elk River.
The other thing, what kind of, is there a fine on illegal dumping there?
We started that this year, three hundred and fifty dollars, so.
Oh, I think a thousand is a better. Maybe not for my root ball that I might accidentally have dumped in there one time or another.
But to make it palatable for our residents, what we do is we reach out to them and if they remove the illegal. There's no cost to, to that. And, and we've seen a few folks wrestling, I'm not joking, a couple of stumps about like this.
Yeah, onto a sled bed trailer by himself, sweating profusely. The Christian and me wanted to stop, but the city guy and me said.
So just a, a couple of things to, to point out, there are. Do this, Corinna Township, I, that's where our, our cabinet is at, um, they just instituted this, they started a composting site. And it was open, and then two years later, they gated it, and then they gave you a code. And everybody kept violating it, and so now they went to a, it's locked and you have to check in at the township hall. Uh, eight to two, Monday through Friday, and people revolted. So now they said, oh, if you want access, here's a card, it's thirty dollars annually. To do that. I use it once or twice a year, I pay the thirty bucks, cause it's convenient and you just do it. So there's precedent out there for that. Uh, the other thing is, is we're trying to push to the county, you've got a big old site in Becker. Put your wood site over there, let us do grass clippings. Yeah, the county's keep, keeps doing this thing, but we'll keep beating that drum.
Yeah, cause they don't have general public going out there right now, so that'd be a security change for them.
And the other thing that we're gonna try and do with Vonco as well, is to reach out to the operations folks that we've worked with on other things. To say, if you're grinding this, i- and you're doing it countywide, why not let them bring it right to you? You know, keep the grass clippings here and here, and the Becker site, you receive all the debris out there. It saves a ton on the hauling side of it. And they're right there, so you'd think their mobilization is.
Cause that makes too much sense.
Yeah, so just a couple of things that we're trying to push on as well, so.
What do we do with the grass? Okay, so let's just say we were just, let's just say something like that did occur and, you know, the bigger stuff goes out to Vonco. The grass clippings just stay with Becker, then what? I mean, do we just, do we just operate a compost site, or do we just skip that up and send it over to Vonco?
Well, we'd have to plan for a grinding, but the grindings would probably be. Probably more like every three years, even maybe less than that. I mean, the amount of. Grass and organic material like that we get is significantly less than tree debris, so. Have them come in, run it through the grinder, and then yeah, you pile it up and now technically yard waste and composting are different. So we'd have to make sure we're keeping in line with the PCA and their people, but. Um, yes, we've used material that we've had sitting for a couple of years. Top dressing our fields at the BAC, top dressing the ditch on Highway ten, top dressing other parks, so yeah, it's good material for that. Yeah, there's a few weed seeds in there, but you know, we can work around those, so. But it, it didn't have a cost, we didn't have to go purchase black dirt, so that's a plus.
And Vonco takes big tree debris, like stumps and.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we're not sure, we kind of talked about that at the meeting some, we weren't sure how open Vonco would be to. It'll be the next meeting with the county, we'll kind of see if they can start that conversation, you know, it would make a lot of sense if these. Commercial people can just drive there and get rid of it. It's right at your grinder, you don't have to mobilize, bring your mater, you know, your equipment around to our sites. Make a lot of sense to me. There's a site across the street that's, you know, not being used anymore, you could have that be your dump offsite and then it's real close too, so either way.
That if the, with the, with the trees and stuff were taken right to, that would solve our problem completely, I wonder.
It would make our problem very different than what it is now, yes, we wouldn't have much of a problem. We could take a lot of yard waste for several years before we had to really think about doing much with it, yep. Yeah, you, if you go out there, well, you can even go on Beacon right now and look at the, the pile from last year, cause that's the photo. It's about three quarters of the site, that's how much tree debris we had, so, yep.
Yeah, you couldn't just have one big old redneck bonfire, just like a city event, or, you know, put all the stumps, all the trees, just, you know, just have a.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Could use it as a, as a training for fire department.
Find an old house and fill it up.
There are a bunch of stumps in there.
For the existing pile, it was, it was talked about, just because. Well, what else are you gonna do with it right now? I mean, we'll have to grind or do something with it, so, but it's gonna have a cost that goes with it, so. Yep, okay, well, I've got some things I can talk about in August.
Probably fly over to Northern Meadow and start to play.
All right, post office discussion. Well, it keeps rearing its ugly head, so Big Lake. Yeah, got notified. Like ten days ago, so I went to their city council workshop meeting, I think last Wednesday. Um, nobody really knows what's happening, um, but they were told. Their post office is like ours, it's old, they need something new, definitely. Um, but Big Lake's pretty worked up, so I went last Wednesday and, and really the message is. Maybe if we work together, this is probably still a long shot, but two communities complaining are stronger than one.
Are they getting booted too, or what?
They, they might get moved to Monty as well.
So, oh geez.
So there, there's been.
Well, then Monticello's gonna have to build a new one.
They're gonna have to add on. Uh, last Thursday morning, I did talk to the mayor of Monticello. He's not interested in having a whole bunch more traffic, because where their spot is. If you're coming from the south, you're gonna have a semi turn right at Perkins, that doesn't work, there's not enough room. And if you're coming from the other direction, you're going through two roundabouts. That really doesn't work either, so we're trying to coordinate. Um, I just wanted to kind of get consensus, I'm sure you're fine with me working with Big Lake. I mean, that, that's just kind of what we talked about last week, if we can, so Mayor Kinnear and I have. Talked about this several times, we talked about it again this morning.
Are you talking about a shared facility?
No, we're talking about telling the post office, leave both communities, you know, with their stuff there. Honestly, I mean, I think the shared facility, I don't see how it's more efficient when you look at miles, but. Becker and Big Lake shared makes a whole lot more sense than anybody driving the Monticello through that mess.
You put something like on eleven or somewhere, it was really close to both communities, maybe, and.
Right.
What their hangup is, is they don't build a building, right?
Well, no, they built the building in Monticello and own it, so. I did have about a forty-five minute discussion with Greg Shelton today, he's out of Colorado with the United States Post Office. He's telling me we'll have a resolution in thirty to sixty days.
We've heard that before.
Correct, um, he told me the decision is made much higher than him. Um, but his backstory was they were working with the business owner in Becker who dropped out, and I said, that is absolutely not true. Grant worked with you for years, gave you a year additional notice. So, uh, everybody comfortable with me working with Monty, so, Monticello and Big Lake? Um, I asked Mayor Hiltgard in Monty to provide a letter that says he doesn't want our people. And he doesn't want the increased traffic. So I don't know if he's gonna do that, um, I'll get back to him, but does anybody have any opposition to that? Um, Mr. Shelton today, uh, is in a bit of a panic, because he's worried that that building might be. Demolished, and I said, dude, it's mostly gone already. And he's like, what do you mean? And I said, you have, it's, most of it's gone, um, and he's.
There's no structural cracking or anything from that in there.
I saw Grant last week.
That, that wall that's there, that's the old shop from Anderson Gilead. So they took that building down completely, basically, except for that wall.
Already looks better.
Um, yeah, so I told him the building's already gone, you are not getting an, an extension. He wants the city to provide a spot for temporary post, post office boxes, like, uh. If you just got a, a big cement pad laying around, and if you don't, we will pour the pad. So right away, I thought, let's get pickleball courts out of them. But, but here's the post office, they will spend money to pour a temporary slab. How about our parking lot?
Yeah, but, but, but they want to come from Monticello.
Well, that's just because he doesn't know what he's gonna do in October. Even if they decided, hey, we're staying in Becker with the, with the, um, operations. And a retail.
Come October, it's gone.
Come October, they don't have a place for people to get their mail.
I'd be willing to do something if they make a commitment to put, to get a new post office, but otherwise, I'm not too interested in helping them out.
Well, exactly what I told him is, why don't you give us a signed lease agreement here and we will accommodate you. And find a spot for the postbo, post office temporary boxes. Um, again, that decision's made above him, but he is sure it's gonna happen in thirty to sixty days. And I said, well, that does put us out to. I mean, that, that could be September first, which only gives you a month. My concern is, I, I don't, I don't know what they do with the temporary boxes, if they are gonna move. He said, we are gonna have a retail location in Becker, we're gonna have. A post office, but it won't be ready in time, and he doesn't know if it'll be retail only, or if it will retain the. Operations, so I talked him through the fact, if you're looking at a map, Monticello looks close to Becker. Last Tuesday, I would babysat my granddaughter, came home, stopped at their post office. Clicked my timer, I got to Becker thirty-eight minutes later.
And depending on the time of day.
So, I mean, he said he would reaffirm that with the people above him. Um, Mayor Kinnear and I are gonna try to be on a call with Emmer's office tomorrow out of DC.
Well, would they operate it out of that current post office in Monticello?
He said they, according to Mr. Shelton, they do own the property next to them, which we've heard conflicting things. Yeah, I've heard both, but he said they would have to add on, and I told him today, I said, Monticello doesn't want you. And he's like, what do you mean? I said, I talked to him, they don't want you over there, it's too much semi-traffic, and you can't get there. You should come try to drive a semi and turn by Perkins, you're either gonna take out cars, or you're gonna take out a stoplight. I mean.
You'd almost be better off making a left, going all the way home, doing a U-turn in like the parking lot and coming back.
Back by holiday, I, honestly, I don't know. I think we should make a video and send it to him, but.
You and the Big Lake mayor can do that, yeah, right?
But I did tell him the same thing, if, if you were gonna permanently locate here with your operations. You know, I don't, I don't know what that looks like, so.
That would be a, you know, if there's a. Not that it's our issue to quote-unquote solve, but. I mean, the, the post office is one of those destination things, you'll go to it wherever it is, it's not like you're gonna drive by and go, oh crap, I need stamps, you know, or like a. Where it has to have a great visible location to try and draw you in. So I mean, if there is a tougher commercial property, and I'm thinking of like. Um, you know, like the hideout, the, the one right next to the, um, on eleven and ten there, it keeps rotating. Yeah, whatever it is now, I mean, it keeps rotating, but it's, it's a hard property to, you know, if you're trying to run a location as a debt, you know, where people like. Draw you in, that's a, that's a horrible place, however, if that's where the post office goes, you will go there. So it's, um, it's almost, if, if there could be a place like that, if somebody was sitting on a. A commercial property or something like that, where it'd be like, it'd be tough to, tough to get rid of otherwise. This might be this time to.
They've already, they've already ruled out Becker and Big Lake combining.
Oh, they did?
I asked them that today. Cause I said, I don't know why you're picking Monticello, that, the worst possible traffic jam bottleneck in the world. And I said, I would have a hard time arguing with you too much, and if I'm a postal delivery, driving the eight miles to Big Lake. Not the end of the world, or vice versa, cause I offered to host Big Lake. Um, he said, oh, that's, that possibility's already been eliminated. So I'm like, so you pick.
Even Clearwater's better than Monticello.
Crappiest possible, cause Clear Lake already has been merged with Clearwater. It's a five-minute trip, but I said, you, you picked the worst thing, and he said, yep. They did, not me, the, the people that are screening them have picked it, so. Yep, but, so.
Makes you wonder why they lose billions every year.
Right, so if people are good with it, I'm still working with Big Lake and Monty to try to do what we can.
Well, I mean, I, I would be in favor of, of helping out with some temporary thing, if we had a, an agreement.
Well, I figured people would, I mean.
I mean, residents are bugging, it's one of the things that they're bugging me about all the time.
For sure.
And you're like, we have no answer.
And if we make.
It's like our responsibility to build a post office.
Right, if we make it too, too inviting, though, we got, we kind of gotta leave a little pain in there, because. We don't want them to get too comfortable, where they go, oh, good, we don't have to solve this problem anymore, we'll just, we'll just do the bare minimum, we'll just maybe offer some boxes and. You know, good luck, and now our temporary slab turns into, you know, twenty years later, we're the ones giving them the eviction.
That's why you sign lease agreement or something.
Right, but I, I already told him, it's, it's, this is not okay, it's completely unacceptable to leave us, even in the interim. Without a retail space. I go, yeah, go pick up your mail, it's fine, and he said, well, the mail's still gonna get delivered, I go, it's gonna be a day later. I'm like, I can't imagine.
Already rough, just because of the employment.
So, anyway.
Well, if you've got anything to get assigned for, and you're not home, you're gonna be driving to get it. I don't wanna drive to Monticello to.
Yeah, I hate that.
Try to do that, yeah, I don't go there on purpose.
I mean, honestly, yeah.
Side business Phil back there. Can you bring me KFC when you're coming back too? Uncle Phil's mail courier.
You'd be busy.
He'll be hauling stumps out to Vonco and on the way he'll be.
So anyway, just so people are aware, I mean, we're, I told Mayor Kinnear I'd call him and we're. They're just at the point of writing letters and they asked us, and I said, oh, we wrote letters a couple of months ago and. So, well, hopefully tomorrow, maybe we can get some traction with Emmer's DC people and we'll go from there.
You don't want to share that dude's phone number with the entire community, do you?
Well, his email was already shared. Well, his email was already shared on the Big Lake Community Forum.
No way.
Yeah, that's where I saw it, so I called, I called.
You're ruthless over there.
I actually called one of the council members and I'm like, hey, you having post office issues? And she's like, you wouldn't believe it, I go, I bet you I would. And they're going, I mean, I said, you're just three months behind us. So, but Big Lake was even unaware that the Big Lake postmaster had come to Becker for the site visit, they didn't even know that stuff was happening, so.
Yeah, they, uh, when we were doing the original bridge surveys, somebody put on the big one of the Big Lake forums, they, uh. They made up their own option, I mean, we had options A through E, they made up an option F and it was gonna cut through Big Lake and they had posted where to contact to get it added as option F. It was like, I think it was SRF and they had like, yeah, they were, they were relentless about that, that was.
I think he's got. He did mention today that. I can't remember his exact word, like, Big Lake seems to have a lot of indigestion about this right now. I'm like, yeah, well, I didn't post your email. All right. Roundtable, I just had two quick things, food shelf update. They're looking at possibly building a building, so that might be something we hear about in the future. Can I talk more about that? So they they're kind of eyeing that lot possibly behind the Legion, it's the old. Lot that we own. So just know that, um, their lease actually expires with Furniture Mart this month. I talked with their owner today for quite a while about if the. And this is very preliminary, but if the food shelf were to pursue their own building. We really don't wanna move them twice in the next few months, so their owner is getting. Not really interested in having it there, but maybe it's more palatable, so I'm kind of trying to broker a deal there.
Own their own building rather than using the space that we have. Which we give to them, right? Where are they gonna get funds to build a building?
They were saying they grew thirty percent a year.
Yeah, their use has dramatically expanded since they've been here.
Well, I bet I can believe, but I mean.
Be very hard to go to a smaller space now that you're used to the big one.
Right, I mean, they have more equipment and it's just not a good fit.
That's our safe room.
It is definitely very preliminary, but. Almost Greg Shelton didn't hear that, it's not big enough for post office boxes. The reason I brought it up tonight, and I don't wanna speak for the food shelf, but they're progressing enough where they're. Their Phil has helped a little bit with some of the background work, Jacob's had discussions and Austin's had discussions. They're far enough that they're talking to contractors, they're talking about building plans. So I didn't want one of you to hear something and then be like, well, what's this? So it's, I don't speak for them, but.
Just where they're at.
There there could be a capital campaign for them to do that and it would allow them to be open some different hours. They've, I mean, in the last year, QuickTrip donates a lot of stuff, Grant and the Radamockers donate a lot of things, so they have a. Much bigger need for freezers and things like that. Um, or it used to be kind of the the one or two fridges we have and it's. The churches, I would say too, are much more involved than they used to be, I mean.
I used to bring stuff over from church all the time.
And the pastors are pretty, pretty involved now, uh, operating like a board, more than just kind of. When Jan did it.
So this all happened because of the rumor that got out that we were kicking them out of here?
The space, they just, it's not gonna be big enough for them.
The actual footprint is, I think, of, it's only a couple of feet.
Virtually identical to what they had here, but.
They had other, because they were overflowing into that. So, and that was before, and now if they got more freezers and even if you. Found a place, you know, in the garage, just say, like in the new garage or something, even if you put those there, that's still.
We can't, um, walking through the PD to get stuff.
Yeah, it's definitely not ideal. Cause you'd have to go get, yeah, go get staff just to go in the garage to go get something and if you forgot it, then you gotta go get them again and, yeah, so.
So, I just wanted it on your radar to know that they're they're moving pretty fast, um, to at least discuss it and. We'll see if we can get them to stay at Furniture Mart.
Is that something we, do they wanna become landowners or they wanna become renters? Or for the land, I mean, is that something we rent the land or do we sell the land or, um, what would it, what would be their ultimate? Goal if we looked at that lot there?
I don't know, because they they would have to share a parking lot with the township.
I think we would prefer they own the land.
Right, own it.
However they acquire it.
That would take them to a whole nother level, when you're owning property, I mean, whether they, you know, this building, I mean, right now they just, you know, it's a nice easy five-one C three. Takes in some money, taking some free, it's a lot easier, that puts them at a whole nother level there when they're.
That's why I was questioning it.
Yeah, it does, but they're organized really similar to, well, exactly the same actually is how the Clearwater Clear Lake Shelf is, I mean, they they have all the. Proper documentation, because Clearwater just built. Um, Big Lake is getting kicked out of their spot as soon as they build a new city hall.
We got a post office in it.
Yep, so that Big Lake is, um, their food shelf people are also looking, so.
All I know is there's gonna be a spot for pizza factory.
I mean, both these places gotta take semi-traffic, I mean, you could actually. I need to pick up my mail and two dozen eggs and a gallon of milk, three cans of chili, but. I just want it on your radar, nothing's been promised or anything, but.
Do we need to have a discussion in the future then about? If 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 they're ready to move, like, what is our interest in that, you know, with that property, I mean, do we? Is it a, do we sell for a dollar, do we sell it at retail price?
Once they make the request, we need to have a discussion.
Yeah, in my conversations with them, I said, it's gonna be important for the council to weigh this out, you gotta have a plan, we're gonna need to see something, where is this going? Um, before you come and say, hey, would the city consider donating or selling it for a dollar? Um, the council's gonna wanna see something, and they were okay with that, so it is in their court to make that happen.
What is the value of that land? Do you know? Close?
City lock, what, sixty to a hundred?
It's stubbed for water and.
So it has all that there.
Have a hose on it?
Yeah, there was a hose.
That's why I didn't wanna stand up, because I got a spot on my pants. That was good too. Um, when we talked with them yesterday, because we had a meeting with Marilyn and then Joe was here and then Pastor Johnson. Pastor Dave was here, they had asked a quite, a lot of questions about zoning, we had talked to him about Phil, had already kind of done a lot of that work and. Reiterated, based on that discussion, it didn't sound like they wanted to go quite as big as Clearwater, but. Part of the issue is they didn't really know what they were doing on size and they had a lot of ideas on, well, what if we do a kitchen, well, what if we do a conference room and so. To Greg's point, we reiterated that the best way to get there is to come up with a plan. We can tell all the zoning parameters and all that kind of stuff, but until they have a set idea of how much square footage they want. And there were a couple of things that we'll respond to pretty, that'll be tomorrow, um, we talked about that already, that we'll respond to them on those, so they have. Really good answers as they move forward, um, but. A lot of it's not really, I mean, unisex bathroom, they had a question about that, can they do that, so some building code things, but. If they had an architect to kind of guide them through that or a designer or whoever, and I know Phil has already suggested to them, that would help them a lot in putting that stuff together.
They have a lot of meetings scheduled for tomorrow and that's why I just thought it was important to say it tonight, so out of full disclosure, nothing's. Once you meet with three people in this town, people are gonna know about it and. So I didn't want you being blindsided of wondering what that is, so.
Get all the local gossip at church on Sundays.
You would have heard it, Mike. Now, at least you've been told.
The value is fifty-six four.
Really?
It seems like a lot.
It does seem like a lot. Point three-five acres.
It's got utilities in it, so, yeah.
It's got utilities.
The other thing I was gonna say is on the zoning standpoint, now that it's been adopted, it'll be official on Saturday, but. With the UDO too, it is a use that is allowed under that mixed-use zoning, if it was before we, this had been adopted, it wouldn't have been. A permitted use, because it was an R one, so, just so you know, that's also been.
Courier service will take them though, we'll give them their number. Oh, you're looking for baby formula, that's in the oak room. Yeah, down down the maple corridor. Uh, one, anybody have anything else on food shelf? The last thing I had just real quick was, have there been any more discussions on the e-bike thing, Phil?
Yeah, gathering information.
Can we set a speed limit of ten miles an hour on the trails?
Yeah, I don't know how you.
Not necessarily, you're gonna sell there, but I mean, as far as, you know, I don't know how you'd enforce most of the things either, you know, if somebody's on an e-bike and same thing, if they just. If we say no e-bikes and they cut on there, there's, it's the same as that, but I mean, if you were to say that, that way you don't have to get into the definition of what's an e-bike and what's a. Whatever, it's just whatever you have, it's ten miles an hour, pedal bike or whatever.
I would be cautious about making any kind of regulation where e-bikes aren't allowed, they. It's, you're gonna have residents down your throat.
Well, then you can have them, but then you just can't, whatever it is, whether it's a pedal bike or whatever, you can't be.
What's good to having them if you can't ride them?
We can ride them, you just can't be on the trail, I just, I know it takes time and we gotta do it right, but I'm just afraid we're gonna. Have something ready in November when we're not.
Well, I know the PD had a lot of conversation with some people on Freedom Days down there, there's a lot of discussion with them, so.
I'm just curious.
I think people are starting to kind of. Understand that's, something's gonna be coming up, you know?
Yeah, a few people make it bad for everybody.
Cause it's the kids, not the adults.
Well, that's not all true either.
We don't have regular bikes anymore.
You have e-bikes?
No, I don't have any kind of bike.
All right, anything else for the roundtable? Nope, all right. During the meeting at six forty-two?
I don't know where recycling is anymore.
Oh, yeah, don't get it.